Welcome everyone to our February 11th afternoon session meeting. We're gonna go ahead and have the city clerk call roll call.
Billisich. Capen Gomez.
Present.
Dodge.
Here.
First.
Montesino Cervantes.
Here. Just to note, we did get plenty of advance notice that councilmember Hearst would not be able to join us today, so it is an excused absence from today's meeting. Our first item on the agenda is our consent calendar and agenda items. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as one consensus motion. There is opportunity for anyone wishing to address us on items that are on the consent agenda, they can feel free to approach the podium. Seeing no public comment on the consent agenda items, I will return it to council. Councilmember Dodge?
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
And a motion by councilmember Dodge, a second by Vice Mayor Hernandez. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to speak to item 4.2 on the consent agenda.
Yes, please proceed.
This is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District for partnership with the construction of fiber optic lines from Watsonville Civic Plaza to the Watsonville Transit Center at 475 Rodriguez Street. As a member of the transit board representing the city, I've reported several times that we're in the process of trying to upgrade the facilities at the transit center. There's been some recent activity, for those who will pass by will be able to notice that some of the kiosks have moved. There's architects that have, there's going to be, the Santa Cruz City Transit Center is gonna go also through a revamping phase. But in the city of Watsonville, we've had a, we've had a high number of crime that's gone on in that area, and particularly to some of the alcohol use that's coming from stores that are close by, and some of the other issues pertaining to responses that our police force has made on several occasions. So we've met myself, members of the city staff, members of the police department, Chief Solano, and members of the transit district to be able to look at providing a more secure and safe environment there, also to coordinate some of our efforts going on with our downtown business redevelopment. So this is, this is an item where both the city and the metro, and I want to thank everybody involved from city staff and Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District, Les Wyatt, Les Lynn Serin, Les Seguisard, and other members of their staff for working on this to be able to realize that two government agencies can work together to be able to provide a safe environment for the customers that ride the transit district, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Billisich.
Yes.
Capen Gomez. Dodge.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Montesino.
Yes.
Cervantes.
Yes. Now moving on to our first agenda item under new business. We have a presentation on the proposed Chromium 6 drinking water regulation and the potential economic impacts to the community, and this is a report by Public Works and Utilities.
Alright. Good afternoon, Mayor Cervantes and members of the city council. Steve Palmasano with the Department of Public Works and Utilities to give you a brief update on the proposed Chromium 6 regulations and the potential economic impacts on our community. Before I get into that particular issue, I wanted to remind everybody of our excellent track record in providing safe, clean, and reliable drinking water to our community over the last 80 years. We have consistently met all of the state and federal drinking water regulations over this period, and we also have a very reliable water system that we're very proud of. One of the things about our system is that it is, in fact, a network of 12 groundwater wells and then a surface water treatment plant in Correlados. And so we are lucky in the fact that if one of our wells goes down or needs maintenance, we have coverage through this network that other wells can provide that water to different areas of the community. We're also very proud that we have been able to maintain the lowest rates in the region by far for many, many years, and we hope to continue that trend. So what is Chromium 6? It is an element found in the ground, in our aquifer, it's naturally occurring, and 90% of our water does come from our groundwater aquifer. So in some cases, it is an industrial contaminant such as in the city of Hinckley where the movie Erin Brockovich was based on, but in our area and our surrounding adjacent water systems such as Soquel Creek and Central Water District who also have Chromium 6, it is a naturally occurring element. So the maximum contaminant level, that's sort of the regulatory limit of how much our chromium can be allowed in the groundwater, is set at the federal level at 100 parts per billion. And just to give you a sense of what that means, one part per billion is like a drop of water in a very large pool. So that's the very, very small amounts that we're talking about here. The state of California is generally ahead of and more conservative around these types of issues, and so the state limit for chromium is 50 parts per billion, so half of the federal limit. And the proposed state limit is 10, so that's 1/10 of the federal limit. And it's, the proposed MCL is for Chromium 6, which is a subset of chromium, but essentially almost all of the chromium in our water is in the form of Chromium 6. So the two regulations are essentially analogous. Though currently, 100% of our wells are in compliance with the state MCL, but with the new proposed MCL of 10, 80% of our water supply would be out of compliance. So eight of our 12 wells, which provide, those eight wells provide 80% of our drinking water, would become noncompliant with this new regulation. The hard part of this issue is the economic impact on our community. Just to give you a sense of perspective, our annual CIP budget for the water fund is around, the last three years at least has been around a half a million dollars a year. We are looking at a $26 million capital project to provide treatment to those eight wells, and in addition to that, 1.7 million in operation and maintenance costs ongoing each year from the beginning of the project. What that translates to in terms of a rate increase is a 78% rate increase to our community, a huge, a very significant rate increase, bigger than any rate increase we've ever seen. Right now, even with the lowest rates in the region, we see nearly 1,000 water connections in jeopardy of being shut off each year due to delinquency, due to an inability to pay their water bills, and we can't even imagine what a 78% rate increase would do to this population. And in addition to the financial costs, there are non-financial costs associated with this regulation. If we can't stay in compliance with it, there would be a loss of public confidence in our drinking water system because we'd have to say we were out of compliance with this new regulation, and that's a very hard place to be. And enforcement penalties could also come into play, and we don't know what those would be at this time, but we've heard up to $25,000 per day, which would be incredibly expensive as well. And on top of this, we all know that Watsonville is classified by the state of California as an economically disadvantaged community, and what that means essentially is that our per capita income is under $15,000 per person per year, and that is half of the levels of the statewide average in the United States. So we are certainly a poor community. One of the things the Association of California Water Agencies did in response to the proposed regulation was to do a study, and they studied the economic assumptions used by the state in developing what they thought would be the cost estimates required to implement the regulation and add treatment systems to the various communities. And what they found is that the state severely underestimated these costs by a magnet, by four times. And so they proposed what the state estimated was about $1 million, and what Aqua estimated was about, oh, not a million, a billion. What Aqua estimated was a cost of $4 billion statewide to implement this regulation. So it's a significant underestimation, and part of the rulemaking process in developing a new MCL includes both the health data and the economic data. And so the Association of California Water Agencies is asserting to the state that they really need to relook at the economic data that went into developing the original MCL at 10. And so we've been working with a number of different communities to take a look at this and see how they will also be affected. And so we've reached out to nearly 300 communities to find out what they knew about this regulation and how it would impact them, and here you can see there are rate increases as high as 140% rate increase. And this is just a small sample of the communities we contacted, but every single community will have a significant rate increase to comply with this regulation. So as I mentioned, we took it upon ourselves to reach out to other water agencies to develop a coalition and to work together to address this issue as a statewide basis, focusing mostly on disadvantaged communities, but it turns out non-disadvantaged communities were equally interested in joining this cause and really working with the state to make sure they're evaluating economic data that went into the MCL appropriately. And what we find out in our calling is that 63% of the communities we contacted actually hadn't even heard of this regulation and were completely taken off guard. And so they're developing their cost estimates, and they are now beginning to reach out to the governor's office, to the secretary of human and health services, and the department of public health. So there's various levels in the state bureaucracy, and we're going higher and higher to get this issue addressed. And we're working very closely with Luis Alejo and Mark Stone and and also Senator Manning has been engaged with us as well, and they've all sent letters to the state on our behalf. So without funding sources, we just can't imagine how we will comply with this new regulation, and so we are working very hard to, and work with the state to make sure they review the economic impacts to this community and all communities across the state, that they provide us funding to comply. If this legislation goes through, what we hope to see is also funding to go along with it, to help us comply with it, especially for economically disadvantaged communities. And also a third point is that we're hoping they will delay enforcement until the MCLs can be complied with, until funding is provided, until there is some sort of solution for us to make this work. So those are the main points in the resolution that's before you for your consideration today, and I think it would send a very strong message to the state. Other, a number of other agencies have done a similar resolution, including the county of Riverside, which is a pretty big community, and other ones are gearing up to do the same. What our residents can do if they have concerns is also directly contact the highest levels of the state, the office of Governor Brown and the secretary of health and human services, Diana Dooley. And Health and Human Services is the agency that oversees the department of public health. And so we're going for the highest levels at this point because time is running out. The deadline for the state to come out with a new regulation is April 15th. We don't have a lot of time to work, to get this changed, and so Jack and I were up in Sacramento meeting with Aqua and our lobbyist yesterday, and with also the executive management of Aqua on this particular issue. We're going back up tomorrow to meet with our member Alejo and the Department of Health Services, the top official in the California Department of Public Health. So we have some good meetings set up. Aqua's gonna continue to also work in this direction, but we need all the help we can get, and if members of our public could participate and also express their concerns, I think that would very, be very valuable and helpful. So I think that ends my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, thank you for your presentation as well as all of your work and effort about being proactive to find a strategy that is most helpful to us in terms of our economic situation. So councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Billisich.
Could you go back to that slide where you showed the, how, the federal one and then the state? Yeah, way at the beginning, right there, that one, yeah.
That one, yeah.
Now, where are we right now, today? We're in the middle.
We're in the middle.
Okay, and this is a national standard on the left?
Correct.
Okay. Why all of a sudden are we going all the way to the far right? Who made that decision and why?
That is coming from the Department of Public Health, which is a state agency in charge of drinking water regulations. And honestly, I don't exactly know why they're pushing this to this limit. I know at the federal level, they're looking at the health issues around Chromium 6. They're still in the study phase, they've, they've looked at the studies used in California, and they actually have found them to be incomplete, and they're spending two to three more years looking at the health studies before they come up with a determination of a new drinking water regulation. And so we, actually, I don't really know why the state's moving ahead of the federal government so much faster.
Well, they may want to be ahead of the game, but, you know, nobody wants chromium in the water. Nobody wants to get sick, Chromium 6, everybody's talked about it for a long time. But my concern is, it looks like we are moving very rapidly here with no funding. We just, in this community, as you know, we've just increased water rates.
Right.
There is no money for this, I mean, people can't afford it. And I don't know how the state could possibly think that we could get there, and why they would go to such an extreme so rapidly, and you really don't know either.
I don't know either, but there are 1,300 communities facing this situation, we're not alone.
Well, one thing, I do commend you for being ahead of the game because I don't think, we haven't heard much about it statewide, you're not hearing, you know, Los Angeles, or you're not hearing other communities talk about it. So I appreciate the fact that we're ahead, but I have no, no solution because residents are tapped, they're not gonna be able to increase their water rates basically 78%. That's not gonna happen.
Right.
Any other questions? Remember questions pertaining to the issue because we still have public input. Councilmember Dodge?
Question.
Yes, please.
Question.
Your microphone on.
My question is, the question I'm gonna ask pertains to, are there other jurisdictions that you've talked about that are expressed interest in pursuing litigation to be able to stop the implementation of this? Are us those discussions even gotten to that point?
We have not gotten to the point of litigation, I think because we're also waiting to see what the MCL comes out on April 15th. We don't know for sure that it's gonna still be 10, it could be higher, it could be lower. And so until the actual MCL comes out, we won't be able to really do anything about it. So I think at that point, it certainly could be something that people start talking about.
Thank you for answering my question.
Vice Mayor Hernandez.
And is it on the, on the League of Cities radar? Are they lobbying against it as well, or they're just not on the radar?
I don't know, but I think that would be a good group to engage on this issue, and we will certainly look into doing that.
Councilmember Kaufman Gomez?
Thank you. I have a few questions for you. We have an incomplete study is what I'm hearing so far, so a decision is made well ahead of the game with regarding doing a full research to find out what ramifications there are in what we're doing now versus the savings of reducing this chemical, is that correct?
That is Aqua's position, that the study done to date, the studies done to date have been incomplete, and there are a number of assumptions made in those studies that are not substantiated scientifically.
So a $25 million project on something unsubstantiated at this point is where we're at. Eight of 12 wells, correct? And with this, would we be able to use, if we had to impose this type of treatment, it's about $500 per resident at this point, and that's probably within city limits. We still have the PVWMA involved since these are within that district, would that be correct?
What I would say is PVWMA would probably not use our water when it got that expensive, that they would find a different that they would find a different source of blend water at that point. So I wouldn't imagine they would be interested in paying that kind of money.
How would they be able to waiver this and we don't?
Well, they would, they would have to use their own wells for blend water. And because their water is used for irrigation rather than consumption, I think they would be under a different set of rules.
Oh, I see. And then I think I have just one more question on that, and that has to do with, would you be able to use the filtration system for removal of anything besides this chromium?
No, it's pretty specific for chromium.
Thank you.
And I just had a question regarding some of the various steps that you outlined on the resolution. One was providing funding for economically disadvantaged communities. The other was additional time for implementation, but I didn't see anything in the resolution regarding trying to change or influence the proposed regulations from the 10 parts per billion to perhaps try to...
I think the way we did that...
And my other question just pertaining to that was, I don't know if there, that's part of the meetings rather than the resolution that we're trying to communicate to the various state agencies in terms of trying to move that number from 10 parts per billion to perhaps a higher number that isn't in terms of the impact economically for our city as devastating.
Right. So the part where we would be adjusting the MCL is under number two in the resolution, where we're asking them to reexamine the economic data and make sure that has been calculated appropriately in the calculation of the MCL.
Okay.
So that is the one that does address the MCL.
Got it. So you're asking for a reevaluation of the original data that was submitted in terms of the cost?
Right. And as we get more and more communities coming forward to the department of public health telling them the rate increases they're looking at, I think that should have an impact on what the MCL comes out to be. And it should, it could potentially raise the MCL because when you create a MCL, it's health data going in but also economic data. So the two come together and they use some kind of formula to figure out what the MCL will be. And so if they've underestimated it by four times, they need to adjust for that.
Thank you.
One last question before public input.
One last question. Other cities that you contacted, you said most of them did not have a plan or know anything about, but what about one or two that did know? What, what are they doing?
They are doing similar things to what we're doing. The biggest, the biggest one we found was the water agency, Coachella Water District. They will be hit with $500 million in capital costs with this compliance. And so they are looking at legislation as well to, and we're teaming up with them. Our lobbyist has met with their lobbyist. We've met with their manager directly, face to face, in a number of meetings. And we're working together with them in particular as our main partner on this of trying to address the MCL at a statewide level.
So if the state imposes this, all cities are going to have to comply?
All cities that have chromium in their water. So it'll be 1,300 agencies.
1,300, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Now is the opportunity for any members of the public wishing to address this on this issue, you can come forward to, to the podium. It's an opportunity to ask questions or just provide any input that you may have about the issue. Okay, seeing none. No public input on this particular issue. I'll return it to city council for discussion. Councilmember Dodge?
I'd like to move forth the recommendation by staff of the resolution expressing concern about significant financial impact of the proposed Department of Health Chromium 6 and request, and requesting the state to comply. I believe this is a letter, this resolution would go forward, well, that's what I'd like to move forward, with the exception that we authorize staff to also forward whatever resolution that we present to Secretary John Laird of Natural Resources and Secretary Ana Caballero, who's also Secretary of Consumer Affairs and as the Department of General Services.
Absolutely. That's a great idea.
I would also like to add that the council signed the letter as a whole so that they see that there's unity among us and I think it gathered, has strength. And maybe you too, Steve, or maybe Carlos, I don't know. But as many people that can sign the letter to show strength from our community, I think would be...
So is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Got it.
I agree to that, I agree to that amendment.
This is a very serious matter and such a costly situation that we're placed in without having the data to support the need for this type of reduction. I understand that we have had, we have seen this as a risk in the past and it's been brought to the media, but in comparison of what we have of 14, 15 parts per billion versus what these settlements have cost because of the contamination, there's a huge difference. And we need to make sure that we're really supportive of you in getting this together with the agencies to be able to hear that message. And thanks so much for putting it together.
Thank you.
So seeing no additional discussion, we'll go ahead and call a roll call vote. Belisic?
Yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. So our next presentation is also regarding a very urgent situation for many of our property owners here in the city of Watsonville. So we have a report about the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program and the rate increases that many of our property owners are faced with.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. Hi, my name is Jackie McLeod. I work in the Public Works Department and I have been kind of researching and getting in contact with FEMA regarding the National Flood Insurance Program. So I'm going to give you a brief summary and talk about some new developments that are happening in the federal government. So a little bit of background, there's been five major acts that have influenced the National Flood Insurance Program, generally making flood insurance available to the public who lives in the flood plain and then making it mandatory for those who live in the flood plain. And that's the Flood Disaster Protection Act of 1973. And then there were various reforms that got it added on in time as floods became larger and the consequences became higher. And so the latest one was the Biggar Waters Act of 2012. And this act has a big impact to our residents. And one of the, you can see on this slide that subsidized policies in Santa Cruz County that are affected by the Biggar Waters Act, there are 1,650 of these policies that are going to be affected. And the effects started January 1st of 2000, or October of 2013, but went into effect in January. So in the city of Watsonville, how this is impacting us is it's shifting the financial risk from taxpayers to actual property owners. The policies that used to be subsidized by the federal government are no longer subsidized. So the homeowners now are going to have full responsibility for their insurance policies. And this affects about 20% of policyholders in flood plains. They're going to be not paying these subsidized rates anymore. And these rates are expected to increase by 25% until the current policies meet their full risk ratings. So the most important thing is to remind homeowners and property owners, if their flood insurance policies lapse, they're automatically going to renew at the higher rates per Biggar Waters Act. So some of the recent actions in Congress, as legislators found out that this was happening in communities and it wasn't economically feasible from homeowners, the US Senate introduced a bill and it's called the Homeowners' Flood Insurance Affordability Act of 2013. And this is kind of a moving target. This just happened in January of this year that they introduced this bill. They passed it. It's now has a companion bill in the House of Representatives and it's in the, in the process of being introduced. These bills will both go into a committee where they will decide if they can delay Biggar Waters until FEMA can conduct an affordability study for people's insurance that live in the flood plain. So we've had some really good movement by city council and the city staff. On January 27th, we had a FEMA National Flood Insurance Protection, or Program Specialist Meeting here at the city of Watsonville, both for mortgage brokers, insurance agents, and realtors as well as the residents. We were asked to write a letter to federal representatives asking for a delay of the Biggar Waters Acts. We were also asked to include in this letter to support legislation of the Homeowners' Flood Insurance Affordability Act of 2013. Our mayor wrote an op-ed article, which was in both papers this weekend, both the Santa Cruz Sentinel and the Register Paheronian. And I've been getting a lot of phone call from residents that went to that meeting. And it seems like the main ask is if we can write a form letter that they're able to send in to their representatives, and I have agreed to do that. That is not a problem. So what our, what our residents can do now is that they can write our federal representatives and they can ask for support of this Homeowners' Flood Insurance Affordability Act. This will automatically delay Biggar Waters Act. The other suggestion that our FEMA specialists recommend it is that they obtain a flood elevation certificate. And in some instances, that can reduce your premiums. So you need to have a certify, a licensed land surveyor in order to get those flood elevation certificates. And they'll do a comparison of your rates for you, your insurance agent. So that concludes my presentation. And if we have any questions or direction for council on further steps.
Thank you. Any city council questions? Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
Sorry, with this cold, I'm trying to keep that off. Could you go back to the one where you mentioned the premiums? You, 1650 or so, I think that might have been it, 1650 subsidized policies. We have more than 10% of our population that, based on the lots we have in our city limits that are affected by this, which is a huge number. And I want to make sure that we can do whatever we can to allow them through, maybe even setting up a link for this form letter, that they can just fill in their address on and shoot it off via the email for a call to action, for the residents to be able to go and make it that easy, instead of having to come down and get a letter, put it in the mail, that kind of thing.
I think that's a great idea.
So the call to action on that is for everybody that would be having an effect on this. It could be you and the residents that you're in. It could be a property that you're trying to sell. There's a lot of financial impact with regards to this and whatever ways we can make it easy, let's do that. The other thing too is to pass that along to as many of the agents that may have put on the mail list that showed up so that they can then use it also to distribute to their clients that they're getting their policies through. Because the more we flood this, the better off we are with getting this word out there and to show that we are a proactive community in having something done about this since it's a detrimental consequence. And I appreciate all of the work that you're putting together to make this happen. That's a lot of impact that we're having here and we're paying the consequences for a lot of other higher risk areas. And it genuinely needs to be evaluated before they start preaching what the policies are and not knowing what the overall costs are in these areas, especially as proactive as we're being with the levy work that we're doing. That's where it doesn't make sense. We need to let them know that we're doing all of this proactive work in order to prevent this from occurring, making it a slightly reduced risk situation for our area.
Any other questions? Councilmember Dodge?
I too attended both these meetings and have been trying to be very active with the residents of District 7, District 1, and District 2. Both District 1 and District 2 are affected by, I would assume are affected by this increase also. But I, and we've had, we've met with the FEMA before and there was a lot of questions, I thought, that weren't, were not answered when we had a meeting at the senior center. So who knew that we were being subsidized? I thought, I thought that, I think that's a question that I've been asked. As you mentioned earlier in the presentation, we've been subsidized, the federal government subsidized some of our rates. The questions I've been asked is, who knew we were subsidized and who, and what does, what did that mean that's gone away? So if that makes sense.
It does make sense and I'm hoping I can give you a concise answer. Anything that I can't answer directly, I can contact Edie Lowman, who was our FEMA specialist, and get back to you with the answer. How I understand the subsidies is FEMA originally in the 70s had subsidized all these flood insurance policies. As Hurricane Katrina and Superstorm Sandy came about, that's when we saw the subsidies starting to go away. But as any more in depth than that, I'm going to have to contact FEMA directly and get that information for the residents.
Well, I really thought in, and I was really glad to see the attendance at the meeting that was, that was held and I thank you for all your proactive work on that. I just don't feel that it's very sufficient that the questions that, that the residents had to FEMA were being answered pretty direct, directly. I mean, who knew that there was going to be this time cutoff as, as you're, just to get to the question, make, you know, you ask people to make sure their policy is in place. What happens if their policy isn't in place? And how will this affect real estate sales possibly in, in, particularly the senior communities?
Well, and I, you know, as far as I understand the sale of homes, you need to assume you're going to have to get a flood elevation certificate when you sell your home because that's going to be required for any new homeowner to go and then get a policy. If any resident lets their policy lapse at all, so that means they are not paying for insurance at any point in time, they can automatically assume they're going to be paying these elevated rates immediately. So the most important thing is to keep a continuation of your flood insurance. Did that, did that answer your question?
Well, it just, I'm just trying to address people that might, that might, you know, might be watching this or, there's so many questions pertaining to it, but it just seems like with the, with the subsidy, you have 37% of the policies were subsidized. And that's, that's for us, correct? That number?
That's for all of Santa Cruz County.
That's for all of Santa Cruz County.
Yeah, the entire county.
Okay, so we can say that 25% is probably, probably related to our, just, just the numbers, what I...
Quite a bit is related to our area.
My, my point being that, that this is sudden, this will impact a lot of residents. And I really think that, again, you know, what kind of other communities, has anybody talked about litigation to be able to stop this?
Not that I've heard of. What I understand, and I've been talking to Senator Manning's office about this quite a bit, is the main thing that we can do is support these new bills that are going through to give FEMA time to look at the affordability study. I have not heard of litigation at all. I've only heard of supporting the new federal legislation that is going...
Well, the reason I ask that, if this, if the legislation doesn't make it through Congress, which they seem to have a particular problem making things, and it, all of a sudden, boom, the financial increases will hit our senior and our, and our low-income communities in particular rather hard, right? And so then what do we, what do we tell them? What is the option that we tell them at that particular point?
And that's a question I'm going to have to get back to you from FEMA. I will have to call FEMA on that. I am...
Yeah, I would be interested in FEMA's answer to that, to that question.
Well, and I will be happy to call them and get you an answer.
Thank you.
As best of an answer as I can get from FEMA.
Please keep the dialogue, please keep the dialogue going for, so that, so that the residents that are affected by this will not feel abandoned. You know, I think that's something that we, as a council, really, we've been trying to encourage them to let them know that, but I think that we have to continue this dialogue on a fairly regular basis, you know, so they don't feel abandoned.
Well, unfortunately, most of the community members that came to that meeting now have my, my office phone number and they call me freely and that is just fine because then it tells me what questions I need to ask FEMA directly. And so they are calling me and asking for help.
Do you think we can post more recent, with the recent information on, updated on the website or the Facebook when we, we ever get stuff like that?
I think that would be great. I think it would be great to include the new bills that are going through federal legislation right now because they are such a moving target. So I think it would be great.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Belisic?
I just wanted to have you note in, in my discussions with FEMA and probably yours too, all the work that we have done, the county has done, the city has done on the levy, really doesn't make an impact on FEMA, correct?
Correct.
They want 100-year flood zone or nothing.
Correct.
If it's 20 years, 30 years, 50 years, it has to be 100 years or nothing, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now... Now, we talked about private insurance. What if we said we didn't want FEMA?
So, with private insurance, how, I had this conversation with Edie, who is the FEMA representative, and how I understand the private insurance is FEMA will not back it. If FEMA is not underwriting it, they will not honor any of those policies. And her biggest warning about private policies was to be careful of insurance programs that couldn't cover your cost if there were a catastrophic flood. So, she just warns residents to be really sure that your policy will be able to cover the cost.
Well, the concern is that residents can't afford these costs, you know, 2, 3, 5,000, 6,000. If they can get a policy for $1,000, at this point, they'd be grateful. And if it's another company and it's private insurance, I think that's something that we need to really look at. I know FEMA wants us to go with them, but are there other options for residents? I think that.
And that I'm not sure of. I would have to get back to you with more information.
And I also think that we've written this staff letter, whatever. Can we go stronger in saying that we should repeal this whole thing?
I look to council for how they would like me to move forward, so I have left it open, and it's, it can be edited at any stage. It's not finalized. I have not sent it out yet. I'm looking for what the majority of council would like me to do moving forward.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Hernandez?
Also, you know, as council, we're getting also emails on this, and people think that this is a decision that the city council made. And so, I actually sent them over Feinstein's information and Sam Farr's information, and asked them to send the same letter they sent me over to, you know, our congressperson, our senator. Can we also do more on our newsletter, for example? Explain what's going on on the newsletter, our social media sites that we have, press releases, explaining more about this and letting people know, you know, how this came about?
I think it would be great, and I think Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez made a good point. If we could put that link directly on our website to the form letter and make it easy for them to go to, I think that's going to be a helpful solution. So, when you guys get those emails, you can just direct them to that link. And then, you're not typing out all the addresses. We're already providing it for you. We have some information on the website about the FEMA update, so.
I'm seeing it there. Okay, question?
Just a quick one. You have website, we're doing this, you have email, and you know there are many residents that don't have computers. Do we have just standard letters that they can pick up somewhere, that they can write? Do we have another way to communicate? Is there a way to put something in the water bills?
I look to my Director of Public Works for that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we could certainly do that.
I mean, at least that would affect everybody that's affected by water in the flood area, and I think it would be a way to communicate. Another, we need to blanket everybody with as much communication the newspapers have, and then whatever else we can do. Thank you.
So, are you asking for the form letter to also be included as part of that?
Might be good.
Just in addition to, I mean, if that's possible? Or just some basic talking points that people can include in their, in the letter?
And I have been telling residents to give me two weeks, because we have been working on the Chrome Six issue, so I told them I will be working on this with a deadline by next Friday with a letter. So, I did put a time limit on it.
Thank you. No further city council questions? This is now the opportunity for public input, if any members of the public wish to comment on this particular agenda item. Please come forward.
Are you going to?
You have to come up to the microphone.
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
I only have one question.
Sure. Uh-huh. Not very well.
Now, can you hear me?
Very well.
Are you going to put the information on the water bill then?
Yes, that's going to be part of our direction.
And some of the email address you had up there also?
Okay. Please state your name for the record as well.
My name is Virginia Yapert. I live in Watsonville. I'm at 478 Vivian Drive.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to address us on this issue? Seeing none, I'll return it to council for discussion. Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
To spearhead some of the questions that you have, maybe having, excuse me, an FAQ, the facts about it, on the most common questions that are asked about this, so that if they do a cross-reference to the FEMA FAQ, will give us the most common questions, a little bit more information, that might be helpful, as well as, I believe that you were looking to put up the PowerPoint presentation, so that those that may have missed the FEMA woman that was here, it would be an available resource for people to go back and, and take a look at, maybe have an option of looking at that at a different, at a later time. I think that's very supportive, and providing as much information out there, in as much detail as anybody that can visit the site for. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodge?
Well, this requires a motion to receive an update on, I'd like to make the motion, I didn't understand E, in particular, a motion receiving update on, do we have to make a motion to update a report?
No.
Well, then I'd like to make the motion for item F, a motion directing staff to send letters to Boxer Feinstein and Congressman Farr. I would also suggest that we alert the League of Cities, as was mentioned earlier. We're not, we should be using their avocation as much as possible. And that's a motion directing staff to send letters to those senators and congressmen Farr, expressing concerns of the proposed increases.
I would like to second that with a little amendment, meaning that I would like to go further and ask them to repeal this totally.
And, and that would be in the, in the language of the, of the letter?
Yeah.
I think that we should state something about the, how it causes so much financial stress and strain, and that we don't even support, I would say we don't support this, this increase, or, or I guess it is a repeal. So, I guess that's, as long as that's included, excluded with the rest of the dialogue that was stated in the letter. I don't want that to be the only one. I would be only, I'd be supportive including, including Councilmember Bilicich's with the intent that staff wanted to present the letters.
Well, and the letter is available for each of you. I did put it under our staff report too, so that you can see the language that is in there. And I truly am looking to council to guide me. I mean, this, I, I can edit it very easily if you would prefer repeal or delay, because the, in the letter, we do talk about supporting this Homeowners Flood Insurance Affordability Act, which will automatically delay Biggar Waters. So, I will, what direction you have me go is up to you.
Well, I was agreeing with Councilmember Bilicich in saying that, I understand, I'm very supportive of the residents that are affected by this insurance. She's absolutely correct. People have a difficult time making sure that you have, making the payments now. The increase that's proposed is, it's a four-letter word, but I'm not going to, going to go there.
You mean absurd.
Thank you very much. It's absurd. So, I understand what she's trying to say about repeal, but in supporting the bill that you're talking about, it says delay. So, however you're creative on including both of those in the language, I would be fine with that amendment that's being made.
Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, because I think, just to tag on that, I think we would be more effective supporting the bill, because that's the bill that's out there. There's no bill out there, or anybody putting a repeal effort, so I think we would be more effective doing, just supporting the delay as of now, because that's, that's what's there on the table. I understand that, and that we want to repeal, but nobody has a bill out there doing that. Right now, the only bill that's out there in the limbo is delaying it. So, I think we'd be more effective just putting our focus on the bill that's out there. And I understand people's feelings that we, that we should, we should, should not be there, but I think we're just more effective, that'd be my two cents.
Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
I also want to point out that we just received the legislative update as well, that Sam Farr is putting this together to support a new bill that's coming out here that is to help with this delay process in order for FEMA to do a better job of evaluating so that we can go ahead and bring it back down to the cost factor of those policies themselves. So, very, very pleased to see this, and that we should also have this available for the public to see.
Oh, that should be provided on the website as well.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Well, I.
Councilmember Dodge?
I, I agree in the discussion period. I agree with, with, that's why what Councilman Montesino was, was saying about supporting the language to delay. I also understand what Councilmember Bilicich is saying about expressing the frustration that a lot of the homeowners are feeling and facing. And I think that we want to be able to, I think we, excuse me, I'll speak for myself. And I want to be able to, in this motion, to express those feelings, and I think that that's what, that, that's a lot what I heard at the, at the meeting that I attended.
Councilmember Bilicich?
I too would like to, I mean, we can support this delay, but we can also make a very strong statement in there that we want more than a delay. We would appreciate having this whole thing repealed. I also think if the entire council signs this letter again, it's unity and it's strength in numbers.
And right now, we did edit the letters so that all of your names are on one letter to sign.
That's good. Thank you.
You, I couldn't find the letter in, in the staff, in the staff report.
Hmm, that's because I'm technologically slow. So, I will work on that for you guys as soon as we're done.
Yeah, and with that, it's also important, if your property owner's in the area, and also on the council, that you send an individual letter in that capacity. That's also strong, because this is a letter going on, out on behalf of one agency, but they also need to hear from various property owners, other people affected by these rate increases. So, it isn't necessarily the number of signatures you have on the letter, it's the number of letters that go out in terms of constituencies in the community.
Well, as, to speak to, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor Protem Hernandez?
I was thinking about this, and I think that both have very different meanings to, to repeal it and to support the act. Could it possibly be, possibly have two letters come out from council, one asking to repeal and one supporting?
That's for the maker of the motion.
Well, I'm asked also.
Well, that was a, I thought it was a question to staff.
Yeah, it was also a question if they think that would be, if staff would think that would be better.
I think it, I think it's fine to support the bill that is there for the delay, and then furthermore, to ask for the repeal in one letter. I think they'll understand, we're supporting the bill, that's what they want to know, they want to know our position. And then, if we put on there also that we would furthermore request that they repeal in another piece of legislation, that would be, I think that would work fine versus two bills, I mean, two letters.
Well, that's the, that was the intent, and I think we're pretty much in agreement on the, in the intent of what it is that we're, we're trying to say. Again, I really want to be able to express the first, the frustration that I've heard at these, at these meetings. I mean, there's, there was a gentleman, a couple that, that recently purchased us a house, and they're just financially burdened by, by this. It was just, it's really sad to hear. And, and I think that if we, we really want to be, I know Congressman Farr hears that, but it's really, it's really what we have to make our point to both of our senators. And I think that that's what we're talking about when we're, we're trying to address the concerns, but I'll go with the, with the, with the council.
Great. Okay. Seeing no additional discussion, we'll go ahead and close council discussion and do a roll call vote. Bilicich?
Yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
The, the motion includes the dual diagnosis, or whatever you want to call it, correct?
Correct, the two-changer.
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes. Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes?
Yes.
Question carries. Thank you very much for your presentation. So, we will be moving to our closed session, and this is now the opportunity for any members of the public wishing to address us on our closed session agenda. Seeing none, I will close.
Honorable mayor?
Public comment, yes?
Before, before we adjourn to closed session, I, I have a community member that was a little late addressing an item on the consent agenda, and she wanted to make a statement to the consent agenda with that. Is that out of protocol to be able to ask for that? Because she won't be able to make the 6:30.
Sure, we can have her come forward, public comment, since we do have a little bit of time.
Three minutes, that's all. And I thank you for indulging me.
Hi, my name is Felipa De Leon. I wanted to talk about the metros, the transit center, and I would like to see you, the council people, to focus on building the Watsonville Transit first, then Santa Cruz, to focus on, on that, because a lot of people want the information booth and other services that the Santa Cruz Transit offers, and also more security for many of us that are there late, especially for people with disabilities. Because I have a friend who comes from Salinas, who is visually impaired, and, you know, and he doesn't know who's out there at night, you know, and may be a bilingual security guard too. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments relating to the relationship between the city and the Santa Cruz Metro Center. Okay, any other comments relating to our closed session agenda item? Seeing none, I will adjourn us to closed session, and we will see you again at our 6:30 meeting.